Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Deegan Simpson County Board of Education. I'm Jim Land, superintendent. And I love having a big crowd here tonight. We have some special, special guests we're going to hear from later. And so we're very excited for that. But just a few announcements. This is our first regular board meeting of the year. And I wish everybody a happy new year and a very successful 2017. We had a great first half of the school year. And we're off to a strong start to the second semester. And I encourage everybody to make the best of it. I'd also like to welcome back our board members. Recently re-elected board members, Bridget Crawford and Heidi Estes. Congratulations to you all. And then I'd like to welcome our newly-elected board member, Jennifer Stone. And then we did have an organizational meeting earlier this month in elected officers. And our chair, again, is Mr. David Webster. And I'll give a brag on Mr. Webster. He is soon to be the president of the Kentucky School Boards Association. So in a meeting next month, he'll be handed the gavel for a two-year term as president of our C5 organization for school board members. So let's congratulate him. And then our vice-chairperson, Nancy Oles. Also have some congratulations to go out to some of our student athletes. Cole Kirby, Dion Pearson, Kate Harvey, and Josiah Robey. All recently earned 2016 Kentucky All-State Football Team honors. So congratulations to those student athletes. I'd also like to congratulate Franklin Simpson High School senior Taven Lovin, who was nominated as a McDonald's All-American. And so that was a big recognition for Taven. I also want to recognize Franklin Simpson High School, recently named the 13th Best High School by, I think it's called BuckCareer.com. It's one of the best high schools in Kentucky. So congratulations there to Franklin Simpson High School. Yeah. Some good news from Simpson Elementary. We have some Simpson Elementary folks here. Michelle Farmer's 3rd grade class at Simpson Elementary was featured as the Junior Achievement Classroom of the Week. And then we're going to hear from this individual in just a little bit. But Simpson Elementary Library Media Specialist Sam Norther recently had a once-in-a-lifetime experience. And he was one of 35 educators across the nation or the world, or both, chosen to participate in the 2016 Lindblad Expedition in National Geographic.
Grovener.
Grovener Teacher Fellowship Program this past December. And it gave him a really unique experience. And he's going to share some more about that in a little bit. Congratulations, Mr. Norther. That was awesome. And I also want to announce that our next Operation Preparation program will be held January 31st and through February 3rd at Franklin Simpson High School for our 10th grade students. This allows the school, parents, and our community to come together to help advise students in college and career planning. Volunteers are needed to help make this program successful. And if you're interested, you can register by visiting our website at www.simpson.kyschools.us or by contacting Robin Hollingsworth at Community Education. Her number is 586-3809. 3809. And we need volunteers. And our volunteers get as much out of it as our students do. And our students love it. And then in March, we'll be having Operation Preparation for our 8th graders at Franklin Simpson Middle School. So look for that. Simpson County Schools is participating once again in a WKU program which allows students from China to come to the United States and observe and experience our schools and community for about one month. And Franklin Simpson High School will have three sophomore students joining us this week. And we'd like to thank Daniel King, his wife, and Chris and Beth Laster for volunteering to be host families for these students during their stay. These kinds of culture programs are rewarding for everyone involved in our district. And our students here in our community get to learn some more about the world up close and personal. It's also Basketball Homecoming Week. And Franklin Simpson High School plays Logan County High School this Friday. And we invite everybody to come out and show theirs Franklin Simpson pride. In fact, their home game tonight, they'll take on Braywood. So after the board meeting, feel free to go over there and cheer on our Wildcats. And then just a reminder that Simpson County Schools will be closed on Friday, February 17th. And we'll be having parent-teacher conferences that week and that morning. And then we'll also be closed on Monday, February 20th on President's Day. So that concludes the announcements. We're going to move to one other important recognition before we open the meeting. One thing about this month is it is School Board Recognition Month. And many folks don't realize that what all goes into being a school board member. We see this event, a board meeting, but there's a lot that goes into being a school board member. In fact, I'll tell you, it's kind of a 24/7 job in some ways. People catch you at work, in the community, at Wal-Mart. And our board members are our voice of the community to help us provide the best school system possible. They get their meeting materials a week in advance. And they review those, ask questions, give feedback to make sure that they're prepared to make the best decisions possible. And they do all of this for very, very little in return, other than the good feeling of contributing and being part of what I think is the most important job. And that's developing the young people that we have in our community. But I want to thank our school board members for all that they do on behalf of our students and our staff and the school system and community. So we'd like to recognize each of you. And as I call their names, I'll let you know how long they've been serving. So if it's not right, you correct us. But serving since 2007, our chair, David Webster. And there's a little token of our appreciation there. Serving since 2001, Bridget Crawford. Did that wake you up, Kim?
You did.
All right. I was calling you this minute. Do you want to go down the line?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Serving since 2013, Heidi Estes. And then this lady, she served in 2010 and then also has been elected to serve since, again, since 2015, Nancy Oles. And then our newest board member, just started her service. But she's kind of served in a different capacity as a wife and board member the last eight years. But starting her first year on the board, Jennifer Stone.
Jennifer made the Oles Award. This is on the West.
So thank you all to the board. And one thing that I can tell you is that they're not always like-minded on every issue. But they are like-minded on always trying to find what's best for our students. And I appreciate them about that. And I'll tell you, they also certainly challenge me to be the best superintendent I can be. And I appreciate them for that, too. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Land. It's truly nice to see all the students here with us tonight. It's just fulfilling to be able to meet with you, especially seeing you present. That's what we're here for, to help you do the best that you can do and you show up to do it, coming to the school board meeting. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a special call meeting because we have a new visitor coming tonight. So all the items on the agenda will be discussed tonight. First order of business is to improve the agenda.
Motion, second.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the presentation of teaching and learning by Simpson Elementary.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Warren. I've got the privilege of serving at Simpson Elementary as principal. And last year when we presented, we had a young lady, Bill Robinson, come up and talk about the book drive that she started off of the Service Learning Project. Her goal was 100 books. She ended up raising 601 books for the Monroe Carroll Junior Children's Hospital in Nashville. So it was an awesome event to see and behold in our building. We thought, what better way to talk about not only teaching and learning, but what sort of leadership looks like. And so we have two groups of students. Now, certain leadership just didn't take place with the young ladies that you're going to see this evening. Took place throughout our building. We have 2nd graders going to Medco with hanging Christmas cards, doing those types of residence. We had a 2nd grade group working with Rainville Equine Care, Ten Care Forces, and trying to help them as far as feeding and things go for those horse rescues. Also Relay for Life. And 1st grade students going to Franklin Elementary to read books to kindergartners and deliver books around Christmas as well. So the two things you're going to hear from this evening, we're going to start with Miss Lea. Lea, you can come on up. Lea is going to talk about the Dime Challenge and what the 3rd graders at Simpson Elementary did for their service learning project.
Hello, my name is Lea Fleming. I am a 3rd grader at Simpson Elementary. I'm going to be talking about the Dime Challenge that the 3rd graders did. During our natural disaster meeting, we learned that Hurricane Matthew loved Haiti in a mess. Haiti needed our help. His, like us, needed food and clean water. These are Haitians waiting in line to get the clean water. So the 3rd graders at Simpson Elementary School came together. We raised $532. That's $5,320. These are bags of clean water that was purchased with the money we raised. We were also able to feed over 300 children. We even made a difference.
Great job, Lea. Thank you very much. I'll thank Ms. Always Miss Purdue as well and reading that project. And next, from 7th grade class, we have Ms. Ellen Hunt, bringing us the four sheet, Sarah Best-Lasher from Miss Jones's class to talk about Operation Christmas Child.
Service Learning Project, Operation Christmas Child. My name is Ellen Hunt.
My name is Ryan Seforsche.
And my name is Sarah Best-Lasher. And we are from Miss Jones's class from Simpson Elementary School. What is Operation Christmas Child? It is like a Christmas present for children in other countries that don't have what they need. You pack a shoebox with these things. What can I fill my shoebox with? Toothbrush, toothpaste, comb, brush, comb, soap, and washcloth sponge, scorsoplas, cotton balls, cats, different clothes. Why is this important? People that don't have what they need, this is a way for them to get it. This can help them become healthy. It can help them become happy and use it help.
Our class, we had a goal of two shoeboxes, one for a boy and one for a girl. Our class asked seven shoeboxes. This is above our goal. That is what Operation Christmas Child is.
I heard there was a bow. The only thing I was having down was not the word, but reading that. So again, Warren just says about the nature of Simpson Elementary, studies about the social projects and leadership that comes with it. So very excited that at least students stood along this evening. And Mr. Norther, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Norther. He's 35, from North America. That's a North American guy to present the Go On Build Lindblad Expedition. So Mr. Norther is going to present about his experience and how this is coming along with his education and his services.
Thank you for having me. My name is Sam Norther. I'm the teacher librarian at Simpson Elementary School. And I had the opportunity to travel to Antarctica with National Geographic and Lindblad Expeditions. They have a growth of teacher fellowship for the past 10 years that allows teachers from across any subject, from grade level K through 12, to experience the world in a really a one-of-a-kind professional development experience. And they send the fellows to several locations, the Arctic, the Galapagos Islands, the British Isles, and Antarctica. And I was on the ship with other guests, along with two other teacher fellows. And there are many purposes of this expedition. I have like the list here of different things that I've gotten out of it. So one of my goals was to bring geography education into the library. With geography and social studies at elementary level, it's integrated a lot into reading. And I just wanted to make an emphasis of that through my experience. And so at the end, I'll show you some of the photographs of what students have been doing before I went and after, and what we're currently doing right now in the classroom. But with the experience, it's a great way to bring outreach to the community about the world, about geography, what conservation is, how can we do it in our own community. It really opened my eyes to the diversity that I find all around where I live now that I never really appreciated. But when you go to a place like Antarctica, you start to appreciate the birds. And you know, I see birds flying around all the time here, and I don't think much of it. But their importance in the ecosystem and how they've adapted and their purpose in Antarctica is really inspired me and changed me. So I've had some photographs here of the expedition. This is the condensed version. But these are all the different types of ice formations. And so you can see iceberg, you can see glacial ice. We got to walk on ice. And so there's a picture of my hand moving the snow, or actually walking on the sea ice. And you have the large tabular iceberg up at the far right corner. And the ice, you never get tired of looking at. That was probably my favorite part, was the ice, more so than the wildlife. Here's chinstrap penguins. That was the first species of penguins we saw. We saw a total of five different types of penguins. And so we saw chinstraps. And it was summer in Antarctica at this time, so it wasn't that cold relatively. It was in the mid-thirties. And it's sunlight the entire day. So you're up until 11:00 PM and it's still sunshine outside. And so at this time of year, the penguins are nesting, they're laying on their eggs. And we eventually got to see some chicks. These are gentoo penguins. And there at the end of the expedition, we saw two gentoo penguin chicks at the top there. So that was another popular species of penguins that we saw in Antarctica. Those are Adelie penguins. Those are by far probably my favorite just because they're just like the cutest. I mean, they have the black head and blue eyes. So we saw a large colony of about 70,000 gentoo penguins at one location. Here we have an elephant seal that decided to come up from shore and plop right down in the middle of the gentoo penguin nest, penguin colony. And they didn't much like that. And so the bottom right, you can see one little flipper of a penguin kind of leaving the screen because apparently he didn't like the elephant seal. So I caught him kind of smacking him and running off. And that made the elephant seal not too happy. But they don't move too fast, so the penguins weren't too worried. Here we have whale seals, lots of whale seals. They actually stay for the winter. So even when there's no sunshine and it's below zero, those whale seals will stay in Antarctica. We saw humpback whales. We saw marine life, too. At the top left, you see a humpback whale coming to the surface to feed on krill. So that's his mouth open. And a rare sight we got to see on our actual last day in Antarctica was the humpback whale breaching, coming out of the water, jumping, and then kind of going to flop down. So in the middle there, you see a whale breaching. We have two types of killer whales. So you learn a lot about, you know, I never knew there were two types of orcas, but there are actually three types. So at the top, you have the type B, which is a little smaller in size. They travel in large pods. And then at the bottom, the black and white, the clearly white ones, are type A orcas. And those are the biggest orcas in the world. And so that there is the top predator in Antarctica. Nothing is above it, which is kind of impressive to think about. And then, like I said earlier, just getting familiar with the sea birds, you know, understanding what their names are. At the bottom, kind of little montage in the left corner, you see brown skewers. And you see a brown skua kind of eyeballing a gentoo penguin because they like to go after their eggs. And sadly, one skewer got an egg there. We were looking at photographs in class in the library. And the bottom right, it looks like a flying penguin, but that's actually a shag. So we got to talk about what penguins can do and can't do just by looking at photographs. So as far as instruction goes, what we've been doing in the library, it's been quite busy, actually, because we found out about the expedition last year. So we've been doing a lot leading up to this. And in this collection of photos, it's helped me build my library collection with finding resources on geography and not just Antarctica. We have collected a lot on that subject because it's interesting to the students. They can learn about a lot of topics with science. They've learned the parts of, they're seeing themselves in the picture. They've learned the parts of the penguin, and they created their own penguins. I took some Antarctica student artwork to Antarctica. They created flags after they learned that no country or nation has a cultural of Antarctica. So they created their own flags to kind of promote like the peace that has been signed there. When I came back, we looked at photographs. So instead of me giving them a presentation, it was hands-on by letting them look at a collection of seal photographs and making observations. And they noted those as a group. We've done a lot with penguins before I went. We've had centers where they learned about the ecosystem. So they actually created that habitat after reading the book, the building blocks. We've used videos and epic ebooks about the topics for them to learn about this region. Currently, 3rd graders doing a research project where they're learning about animals from Antarctica as well as other continents. And they've created a fictional story where a lost penguin will go to a different continent and meets a new animal there. And it's all fiction, but they're using their research. So their lost penguin might float away on an iceberg, land in Africa, meet a gorilla, try to solve a problem, get back home. So it's been really neat. They create puppet shows, digital stories. They've created comic strips. And they're really integrating what they've learned about the facts. But it's been a fun story with dialogue and characters that have acted like that. And the takeaways I have from the experience, it was to dive in headfirst. You know, I didn't know what to expect. I read on the blog what the itinerary was and what we'd be doing each day, going on hikes and zodiac boat rides, and we got to go kayaking twice. But when you're there, you just have to experience everything. You've got to talk to the naturalists. I stayed in the brig a lot, where I talked to the captain and the ship's officers. So any experience, I think, just be involved as much as you can. Expect the unexpected. I had, we weren't expecting to see humpback whales breaching. Never stop exploring. You know, you might think that you understand a topic completely. And I'm still learning everything there is to know about library. Like I have a lot to learn. So I just want to encourage that there's a lot to explore in the world. And then to spread the work, spread the love, spread the joy. And so through outreach, I'd love to talk to any community groups about the experience, what we're doing in the library. If there's more time, I'd like to show you videos of students working and their finished products. But here you have a lot of contact information about how you can follow our journey because it has just begun. We have Twitter, Facebook. I have a blog that chronicles the entire expedition, along with the instruction we've done. And then there's my email. So if you know of any groups that'd like to have to learn more about the topic and kind of understand, you know, I have a lot more that I would love to share. So thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
What an amazing experience. Thank you, Mr. Land. A student presenter, too. We have a mini-presentation next. The next one at Franklin Simpson Middle School, relax, gentlemen.
Today, we are in the Franklin Simpson Elementary School Global Catch. And we are going to present our project for a state competition versus local league. The judges of these competitions like us to share our project before we go under the competition. And we also thought this would be a good opportunity for us to practice presenting our project. This is our presentation.
This year, we decided to investigate how bats and humans could form lines. To do this, we built bat habitats that we placed in strategic locations to help both bats and humans. We can also collect bat guano that we can use as a fertilizer for home gardeners and small farmers.
Bat house we built is built to hold up to 3,000 home ground bats. We built it in about eight hours with professional expertise. It has eight sets of baffles like this one in the bat house, four rectangular and four triangular like this one. The baffles are made out of blue and plywood because the bats can grip that much better than say pressure treated wood, which we did use on the interior of the bat house. So that the bat house has one.
We found that the bats are very picky when it comes to where they are housed. Therefore, we researched what the bats need and we organized it on our board. We found that bats need to be within a quarter mile of water and within 30 yards of trees. Their house also needs to face northeast. We were concerned that the bats might not need, or might need some more condensing to occupy our house. So we researched some more ways to attract them. Those means of attraction included adding plants around the bat house that will attract june bugs, cucumber beetles, green and brown stink bugs, and leaf poppers. Cucumber plants, alfalfa, and wild berries, and honeysuckle bushes are excellent for attracting these bugs.
Bat guano is very beneficial for plants, especially ones you grow in your average garden. It contains 10% nitrogen, 3% phosphorus, and 1% potassium. Nitrogen can cause rapid root growth. Phosphorus produces faster root growth than flowering. And potassium helps produce stronger stems. Guano also improves the texture of the soil. Due to the fact that this guano is relatively fragile, it can be mixed with other compost to enrich the whole batch of soil and provide more enriched quantities, making it an affordable and easy fertilizer for home gardeners.
The main questions that we ask ourselves were, how are we going to make this habitat fit the bats' needs and what is the easiest way to collect bat guano? We actually found a plant of someone who built a bat house previously and modified it to fit our needs. We modified the plant by allowing the center of the bat house to remain open for easier collection of the guano. When we went to build the house, it was quite the undertaking. This house will hold up to 3,000 bats at one time. The bat guano falls straight down on top of the trapdoor for easier collection.
Once the bat guano is collected, there are several options on how to use it. The first option is to mix it with compost and put it directly on the plants. The second option, however, is more intriguing. You can purchase a small, inexpensive pelletizing machine that can make dried pieces into a tiny pellet. Once the guano is in pellet form, you can bag it and store it for later or selling.
We're always looking for ways to post our azartis and raise bat ordens. With this in mind, we created a website. We can livestream a video from inside of the bat habitat and also have a photo gallery to post our newest creations on our website.
We have talked with several bat professionals, shared our ideas with them, and gotten their concerns. Annie Holt, Nature Center Director at Osterly Cave, which is in northern Kentucky, says bats seem to large pond or swamp along with a good food source. Considering this information, we decided to place it near a stream with plain food. We also spoke with John Jackson, Gay Morton of Simpson County.
Our original idea was to give the bat house to, an idea for farmers that have a bird or something.
Well, nice job. The next to the presentation, to the front, we have the purpose detection service team, Chief Roger. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Roger Salden, I'm the Chief of Defense at Franklin. I've been in that position about three years. I wanted to thank the school board for giving me a few minutes to come in and talk about what I think is a very important program for both the police department and the community. So the first page in the packet that you got basically explains the cost. You can see that the approximate cost of a canine, like, in the first year is almost $20,000. Basically, what that entails is basically the dog itself, the annual training, the dog itself, and the annual train is over $10,000. The canine kennels about $350. You've got a doghouse, canine feeder, kennel group starter kit. We were able to get free food out of deals out of Olive Green. They're going to give us an inordinate amount of food, you know, per month for free. The Crocker's Animal Hospital here is going to give us free veterinary treatment. So and then the cage for the cruiser with all the air hookups and all that is about $5,200. So the big cost is the one-time startup, and then I'm going to use the drug fund to pay the annual $1850 fee for the 12 hours per month training that the dog needs after that. So as you can see, back in, towards the back of your packet, the Malinois, which is the dog that we've chosen, is what they classify as a smaller German Shepherd breed. The males get up to around 65 pounds, and females up to 55. They are a very smart, very good work dog. They, the type of dog that we've got is what they classify as a passive alert, which means it's not, like, say it's going after article clothing, or it's going after some narcotics in the car or something. If it alerts, it's just going to sit, it's either going to sit down, or it's going to wag its tail or something like that. It's not going to start clawing. It's not going to be aggressive in any way. The canine instructor, which is, he's had over 30 years' experience down in Asheville. He's kind of doing Olive Green, Simpson County, all the agencies are going for him now. He doesn't, when he goes out searching for this dog, he looks for a dog with no previous bite experience. Because as you know, like, we've made a big push to get, you know, community policing out, get the schools and all that. I don't want a dog that's going to have any, you know, search and aggression or anything like that. So the three key phases of this dog are tracking. When you start to look at your school kids, you know, somebody comes up missing. Last Super Bowl Sunday, we had a small child come up missing, and I, myself, and several other officers slugged around in the mud for over three hours. Coming from the outside, the kid went two trailers over, and was in there, like, they found the door unlocked, kid went in there and was watching the Super Bowl. Like, we could have found him in less than five minutes. And you start talking about elderly people with dementia, you know, Alzheimer's, stuff like that, that's another thing. The article search for your purposes, the article search for clothing, contraband weapons, things like that. So it can be used on the school grounds for making sure that there's no weapons brought into the school. So this can be very proficient as well. I think the narcotics kind of explain itself, but you're seeing a slight uptick in the amount of marijuana and drug offenses in the school this year. We're hoping to, we're hoping to bring that back down. With the, you'll probably see an initial uptick in the amount of drug offenses that you'll see in the school, because we're going to start, with the school, we're going to bring in the dog in there, we're going to be able to initially catch more people than what we would do right now, but then, you know, over a short period of time, it's going to be almost eliminated. So the benefits for your school, basically, reduce the influx of drugs in the school by doing backpack searches, locker searches, car searches. You know, the reduction in drug use, I don't have to explain to you that that should improve, you know, your grades significantly, should improve your behavior. But more importantly, you know, if you've got kids that are impaired in school and they're going out and get behind the vehicle, we can eliminate that as well. So I've already kind of touched on the weapons and contraband that we can eliminate from your school property. One of my biggest benefits of this is PR for the kids. I told the city manager outside of a helicopter, I don't know if you can get any better public relations for school kids. So we can come in and do demonstrations for the school kids. I look forward to that. We've made positive a presence in the schools the last couple of years, and I want to continue to do that. So I know one of the prevailing questions, I know you gave them to the jail for the narcotics dog report. This one, kind of explained to you before, is got a little bit more to it than the narcotics. Get attracted to the article search, too. Part of the reason why with the jail canine, in the past, Kentucky League of Cities in McHale, they're really specific about using a sworn certified officer as a canine handler. So a lot of times when, like, with the jail, you had, you had a dog that a lot of our agencies could not utilize. Plus, you know, like I said before, there's narcotics and tech knowledge, so anything beyond that scope, you know, we couldn't utilize it. School searches in the parking lot, for example, with a certified police officer coming up there, Mr. Kilburn didn't have to, you know, do searches of cars and stuff like that, because once he does that, you know, or any other school staff, they're going to be civilly liable for being inside that car, and also, they're going to have to go to court and testify to what they found in the car. You've got a police officer up there on the scene, and they already established probable cause, they can do the search and then eliminate the school of any kind of liability. Already kind of touched on the passive alerts, how much traffic damage in property that, you know, I don't understand, might have happened more than two times before. Biggest thing that we've got going for us is, you know, we're state accredited now, so we're going to have a lot of policies and procedures in place that establish exactly what this canine and handler can and cannot do. We're going to train it at least 12 hours per month as the minimum. Keep proper records on the dog. The school system, factories, and then all the other agencies in Simpson County will be able to do a lot of this stuff. So it's going to be not only good for your school board and the school, but it's going to be directed to the community as a whole. I'm going to kind of open it up for questions. I do go before the city commission on 23rd. What I'm asking tonight, I've kind of presented this, if you don't have any questions, I would like for the school board to consider giving a donation to the canine program for our police department. That's kind of where, do you have any questions for me? If you bring the dog to the school, do you tell the school beforehand, or just bring the dog up there? No, we, it, really, on that end, it ends up with y'all. Dr. Flynn and myself, Joey Gilbert and Tim Flosser kind of had a meeting, you know, preliminarily about this a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, that was kind of put on the table about the searches. That's kind of where I started bringing in the backpacks and stuff. Because if he starts to learn about the canine and its accessibility, they're going to start to look for other ways to hide contraband and stuff. So the best way to go about that is to do anonymous, a couple of school staff members know that nobody else knows it was coming, so. And I think that's where you're going to see an initial influx, and then it's going to dramatically reduce. Yeah, and what we want is it to be very random and unannounced, and so we talked about some ways to do that. Then we, you know, we could do some block out things, like, you know, we know something's going on and we don't want it interrupted, but otherwise, you know, just say, you know, y'all just kind of unannounce. And, you know, my wish is to make it as little, few people know around here. I don't want anybody thinking that somebody's tipping people off. I want it to be completely random and unannounced as much as possible. Now, on the recurring costs, Chief, what are you, what are you anticipating the recurring cost to be through the park?
Just, just the maximum that we can try and be, and then, you know, I'm sure some equipment will get faulty at some point, but like I said before, the drug fund that we have applies to the recurring costs. A lot of communities, it's just the initial startup, but it's kind of just a hangup, and that's what we're trying to overcome, so. But I think it's a paramount priority for this community to have this, so.
So really, the startup only is kind of what's listed here, gets you started?
20,000. That's basically, I think it's an operational, you know, for time perspective, if we order this dog, say, the first February, it's, once, once he finds the dog, gets it in, it's got to go before 10 weeks of training with the actual canine instructor, and then our officer goes down there for another additional three weeks and trains with the dog, you know, in addition to 12 weeks, 12 hours per month as well. So it would probably be June before the dog would be up in operational, which is good for the school year to start, so. I wouldn't kind of, you know, we could pull about the timeline exactly, and how many times a year is going to bring in the school program and whatnot as well, so.
Have we noticed an uptick in suspected drug use at the schools? That would warrant?
We've had, if you kind of just look at incidents, we're a little bit higher than our recent trend, so. One of the, Tim Flosser and Joey and I, Chief, and Tim brought that up, is one of his concerns. We don't have our kit data, you know, finalized kit data yet. We've got some preliminary data. And when we get the, you know, the final report, we'll be presenting that to the board and talking about that. You know, that's that every other year report that includes a lot of things, including, you know, kind of the use of drugs and alcohol, and attitudes about drugs and alcohol. Preliminary data, pretty compelling, particularly around, you know, alcohol and marijuana. It's a very kind of laissez-faire attitude about it. And so, and I think, you know, the uptick's been mostly around, you know, that, those issues, as opposed to, you know, other drugs and things like that. Now, the chief could probably speak to other things you're seeing in the community, because, you know, our schools are just a microcosm of that. But, you know, my goal, and I know your goal, is we want to send a message, not here, don't, you know, don't bring it here, don't use it here, and hopefully make good decisions when you're out there, too. But we want this to be kind of a safe haven where they don't have to worry about that. But this would be another, just kind of determine, why I can't bring it, or I won't bring it, or shouldn't bring it, and maybe, maybe I'll stay away from it.
Has the problem only been at the high school, or it would have been issues at other schools as well?
I think it's prevailing at the middle of the high school area, most of the high school, but I don't think, like, the uptick that I was talking about is something dramatic. You know, I think, you know, all the accidents and stuff from the other schools, but he's one person for five different schools, and so. It's a small kid you're doing, but his time is allocated at five different schools, and I think that's, that's a part of it, you know. With any teenagers, you know, if somebody's out of hindsight, they're going to do it, they're going to do it then, so. But I don't feel like we have a prevailing hardcore drug problem. We don't have the half-in drugs, you know, we're not prevailing heroin problems in the school or anything like that. Dr. Flynn said it's mostly marijuana, but any, you know, marijuana is considered a deadly drug, so any narcotic is going to get out of the school anyway, so. But I think it's, it's rooted, it's probably in the high school, but, you know, a lot of that sometimes can come from off-campus as well. So it doesn't necessarily happen through that dealing or whatever, but sometimes it can be run in, probably most of the time from outside, so. The kids, those kids just get caught from the wash.
And that's consistent with the kit data, just with the preliminary data. Kind of like a lot of selling going on that doesn't appear, but, you know, they bring it, bring it in, or use it before they come, you know, kind of those kinds of things, so. But of course, the other thing we do with the younger kids, so the programs where they bring you there, they talk about the dog, but they also talk about, you know, what the dog does, and what you need to think about doing, and making good choices that way, so. So anyway, I'm excited to, are going to do this. It's something that, you know, anything that adds to that preventative effort, that's, you know, prevention is the best cure, and if we can send a message that, don't bring it here, then that's a powerful, that's what I would see happen. But of course, if there is something, then we can detect it, and that's a good thing, too.
It's likely the security work is, which is the most important thing, like, so. I don't want to get too hung up on about a portion of it, because, you know, the tracking and art of the search is even more, if not more, applicable to these, you know, kids and other residents, you know, just the same, so. That's one of the reasons why we get a multi-passed caller, so. We didn't want to, want to mention that. Any other questions?
How far are you from meeting your goal, your $20,000 goal?
We're about $10,000 right now, so. And I've got, I've got a meet before Mid-South Shore on Thursday, which is a collection of all the factories and stuff. And then, you know, a couple of the businesses, like Rotary, and businesses and professional women are looking, you know, so. I don't know the final, you know, answers on that, but...
But we want this to be kind of a safe haven where they don't have to worry about that. But this would be another, just kind of determine of why I can't bring it, or I won't bring it, or shouldn't bring it, and maybe I'll stay away from it.
Has the problem only been at the high school, or have it had issues at other schools as well?
I think it's prevailing at the middle of the high school area, most of the high school. But I don't think, like, the uptick that I was talking about is something dramatic. You know, I think, you know, all the accidents and stuff have been out in the school, but he's one person for five different schools. And so, it's a small kid doing it, but his time is allocated at five different schools. I think that's a part of it, you know. With any teenagers, you know, if somebody's out of eyesight, they're going to do it, they're going to do it then. But I don't feel like we have a prevailing hardcore drug problem. We don't have the half end growth, you know, we're not prevailing everyone problems in the school or anything like that. Dr. Flynn says it's mostly marijuana, but any, you know, marijuana is considered a deadly drug. So any narcotic is going to get out of the school anyway. But I think it's root is probably in the high school. But, you know, a lot of that sometimes can come from off-campus as well. So it doesn't necessarily happen through that dealing or whatever, but sometimes it can be run in, probably most of the time from outside. The kids, those kids just get caught from the wash.
And that's consistent with the KIP data, just with the preliminary data. Kind of like a lot of selling going on, it doesn't appear, but they bring the prey in or use it before they come, you know, kind of those kinds of things. But of course, the other thing we do with the younger kids, so the programs where they bring you there, they talk about the dog, but they also talk about, you know, what the dog does and what you need to think about doing and making good choices that way. So anyway, I'm excited to are going to do this. It's something that, you know, anything that adds to that preventative effort, that's, you know, prevention is the best cure. And if we can send a message that, don't bring it here, then that's about the, that's what I would see happen. But of course, if there is something, then we can detect it, and that's a good thing too.
It's like in security work, it's, you know, the most important thing. I don't want to get too hung up on about a portion of it, because, you know, the tracking or the search has even more, if not more, federal to these kids and other residents, you know, just the same. So that's one of the reasons why we get a multi-passed dog. So we didn't want to, I want to mention that. Any other questions?
How far are you from meeting your goal, your twenty thousand dollar goal?
We're about ten thousand dollars right now. So, and I've got, I've got a meet before mid-sour on Thursday, just a collection of all the factories and stuff. And then, you know, a couple of the businesses, like Rotary and business and professional women are looking, you know. So I don't know the final, you know, answers on that, but I think we'll get there. You know, for the city, obviously, you know, I don't want to speak for the commissioner, but I think they're going to contribute as well, obviously. So we're going to get there.
So you're about halfway there?
Halfway.
Okay.
With a long day to go.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I'd leave you.
No?
Thank you.
Next is the faculty, send students to the department, people who are still...
I was getting some information over tonight. I appreciate you giving me a time. Craig Dale, principal of Franklin St. Middle School. And I should have printed off a copy on you this, at a, since you're away, to probably make it easier just to pull up and kind of do a visual of what Franklin St. Middle Schools look like for the first part of the school year.
It looks busy.
It's very busy. Very busy. So what I want to go through are just a lot of structures that we have put into our school this year to really drive instruction and really just kind of put every different component of what we do at the middle school. So at the top, we call this connecting the dots, and we discussed this with our teachers on the reason we're doing what we're doing. Our objective is sixty percent of students to be proficient in English, on STAR reading and STAR math. Those are our periodic goals, quarterly goals, because STAR is a sort of tracking system for us to kind of keep a pulse on our students as they go throughout the school year. We want to continue to see growth in those areas. So our teachers and our students, our goals have been to get there with sixty percent. Right now, the only group that is there is our mathematics and sixth grade math, Miss Stone Ball on one team, so we've recognized her. But currently, we have, Jordy, our grade levels are around that fifty-five or fifty-four percent range. So they're climbing, they're getting there. We've taken three STAR tests so far, and we made another one in about two weeks. So, you know, the goal is to have five data points on how we've been doing with STAR, and that's kind of what we've engaged in growth with our students on, as well as some of assessments and formative assessments that go on, unit assessments that go on throughout the year. But we're kind of really building up the STAR, being very K-Prep-like, being a big deal, and trying to get the best performance we possibly can when we have that day. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, unfortunately, we did not meet AMO goal sixty-four point five, so we currently are at fifty-three point three. So, you know, that's our big goal, that's what we're trying to do within our K-Prep results, to definitely meet our AMO. So when you look at all these components of what's going on within our teachers and students, well, really, it's within our teachers for our students. If you start on the left side, that's our administrative think tanks, that's where we get together as an administrative leadership team, and we decide how we're going to roll out things within our PLCs, within our guided planning sessions, and that's really where a lot of the planning comes from, top-down. When you go around the circle here, we've implemented PLCs this year every Tuesday with our teachers. These are teachers helping teachers plan, assess, classroom improvement. We're really forcing the collaborative process. And within that, we have an administrator that goes with each content area every Tuesday to be a part of the planning process, to be a part of the conversation, and really get in there and roll our sleeves up and work with our teachers on what we need to do to be prepared for day-to-day. One of the things that is providing evidence for us is our overviews that are outside our classrooms. Those are evidence of pre-planning, aligning our standards, content partners working together and staying on pace from grade level to grade level, making sure we cover all the content that we've covered. When you slide over, you look at our guided planning sessions, we have these every Thursday. Those are in our CIA's office, which is Ms. Lee Ann Fisher. That's where we really try to align our arrows, because I feel like in the past, we've had arrows going a lot of different ways. So what we're trying to do is align those with everyone's pushing for, it's the same direction. So within those guided planings, we're talking about every Tuesday's PLCs, we're talking about every Thursday is guided planning sessions, and within those is where we're really focused on instruction. And what we've been following, what we've been doing over the first part of the school year, revisiting overviews, revisiting standards, learning targets, and making sure that we're pre-planning and pre-planning with a purpose, with a focus, and those have been the discussions that have taken place all the way up through the month of December. When you slide over to learning targets, and the overviews go hand-in-hand. Research-based best practices is all about having your learning targets posted and letting those students in on what it is we're wanting to learn that day. You know, so when you go in a classroom, hopefully you'll ask a student, hey, what are you doing? They'll tell you, well, we're doing this, but the reason we're doing this is so we'll get a better grasp of that, so that we have those learning targets posted. It's a purpose for the teacher, it's a purpose for the student, and it just really reflects on the planning process for our teachers, so that we know that they're really front lining those lessons with intentionality and doing the best for our students. When you slide over there to the right, you see our faculty meetings, we have these every Wednesday, and we try to rotate, you know, different forms of what we're doing within those faculty meetings. We go over SWISDA, which is a reflection upon the discipline that's determined within the building. We talk about PBIS structures, which is reporting supporting students. We go over matrix, the matrix that goes along with our discipline data. We do parent contact some certain days. We just do a variety of what needs to take place within a school, and looking at data periodically on what we want to discuss. It's training sessions, for example, Mr. Kilburn's coming to do a de-escalation training with our teachers next month. Ms. Flosser's presented a lot of different avenues of research-based strategies to our staff. We do teacher showcases where they showcase some strategies that they've been implementing in the classroom. So we really try to make it very teacher-focused, where it's an opportunity for them to present to their peers, good things that are going on in the classroom. So we get really creative on those faculty meetings, and there's just times where you have to just go over, just think, to just have to communicate. And that's what we do every Wednesday, but we try to really be intentional with the instructional piece. The light blue, the reason that's light blue is because that's the next step, that's where we're currently heading. We're talking about student engagement now. Now, one thing we do with our walkthrough, our walkthrough data from August to December is really reflective upon our overviews and learning targets and inconsistencies from teacher to teacher with that. Now, we're using a new tool where it's more focused on engagement strategies that we're seeing within the classroom, level of engagement. So I guess the first part of the year was more on what the teacher's doing, now we've shifted on engagement on what the student's doing. So when you walk in a classroom, it's all about, you know, what's Morgan doing in the classroom? Is she actually, is it a teacher-led environment, or is it more of a student-led environment? So those are the focuses that we have currently going on. At our last guided planning session, we read an article and we really had a nice, it was just a nice conversation or similar debate on what is compliance and what is engagement? Because there's, sometimes it's the same, but many times it's different. You know, just because a student is sitting there, taking notes, being compliant, doesn't necessarily mean that they're engaged. So we're having those conversations within our guided planning sessions and just really working towards, over the course of the year, from week to week, month to month, just raising the level of engagement that we have taking place within our classrooms. So this is pretty much the first part of our school year. We wanted to connect the dots, we wanted to put a visual for our staff members, because we are doing a lot of things differently this year, from consistent PLCs to consistent guided planning sessions. And this allowed us to connect the dots. And there's probably an easier way to make this where it was nice and neat, but really, this work is messy. I mean, it's all over the place. So that's where the squiggly lines go to place. And the big red star is just teacher talk and discipline data. We, you know, those are things that we have to discuss also, what's altering some of the engagement taking place in the classroom. And, you know, I just really feel like we've had some good work taking place from August to December, and I'm also excited about the conversations we're having with engagement strategies. You know, last week was great, was a great guided planning session. I think our teachers are really buying in. And in the beginning, based on our test scores with some of the implementations of new systems, you know, there was some awkwardness, some areas of people, of teachers being uncomfortable. But I feel like now it's starting to become something that we do for the right purpose. So it's really starting to become enjoyable. I feel like I personally am becoming a better instructional leader within these systems that we've put in place. And I don't know, I think everyone in our building is growing and growing for a good cause right now. So this is just a visual that I wanted to start the night off with. Okay? All right, the next thing, let's go to the buckets. Okay, if you see here, I've got some visuals for you on what our middle school, what it looks like as part of what drives our middle school. You've got three buckets here. This is breakdown of scores, achievement gap growth, and college career readiness. And this is seventy-seven percent of what our data makes up when the test scores come back. If you look at the first red bucket, thirty-three point three percent goes towards achievement, thirty-three point three goes towards gap, thirty-three point three goes towards growth. Now, we were able to get some points out of achievement and growth last year. So we did well in those areas, but what really pulled us down in, at the middle school was we didn't, we did not achieve where we needed to within those gap points. And actually, we received very few gap points. And when you see that as few as we did, you're talking about thirty-three percent of your score being altered in a very traumatic way, which is what happened to us. I'm sorry, the CCR piece doesn't really apply to us, because they, we no longer take the explore. This is year two where we do not take the explore test, and that was the only component to the college career readiness piece that the middle school is accountable for, so that's no longer exists. All right, when you look at what falls down into achievement, you've got twenty-five percent which is reading, twenty-five percent which is math. Science, we're not accountable for at this time. Those new standards or those new testing components are rolling out this spring, so we're going to be going some trial versions of that. You've got twenty-five percent which is social studies. We've really had a lot of success with social studies, so I hope that doesn't decrease, but from what I understand, it probably will over the next couple of years when they officially roll out the new standards in social studies. That's somewhat disappointing to us, but we'll see how that impacts us in the future. Writing's a twenty percent, and language mechanics is a five. So as you can see, fifty percent of what falls into our achievement is math and reading. So we really have to get focused on those two areas, not that we want to decline the others, but if it becomes a numbers game, you can see that fifty percent of our weight is in those two areas. Non-dupated gap, that's where we really struggled last year and unfortunately did not get what we could out of it all. The reading math, once again, hundred percent of gap is in reading, hundred percent is in math, writing, language mechanics, social studies, science still doesn't count. Percentage of the students who weren't proficient in extinguished in all content areas counts once in each of those content areas. So the non-dupated gap for us, African-American, and the way you become a non-dupated gap is ten or more students actually puts you in a category. So we do have more than ten students African-American. We currently do not in, as far as Hispanics yet, American, Alaska Native Indian, LEP, we do not. We do in free and reach lunch, and we do with disabilities. So those are the three areas that we really had to focus on and look at moving forward within some of the gap stuff. We have a population of African-American, we have a high population of free and reach lunch, and we do have a population of disability students. So, okay. Those are the ones we're looking at. So what I wanted to show you, and I did, we couldn't, Kim and I could not pull it up because it's a confidentiality situation, but I want to show you and just let you look at these and pass them around, and I'll take these out later. This is the breakdown of our students that we spent pretty much the month of December over our break, just meeting as a leadership team and breaking down the data as far as getting as specific as we possibly could with what students fall in non-dupated grad gap groups. So we know what every student in the middle school scored last year, we know if they're African-American, we know if they're free and reach lunch, we know if they have an IEP. And the reason we wanted to target those is because the non-dupated gap group, if you have a student that's African-American, has an IEP, is a free and reach lunch student, they kind of bang us multiple times if they score in office. So one novice score off a student can bang us multiple times when it comes to, when you're talking about a gap group. So our goal was to bring as many offices out of that category as we possibly can to get those scores and to get those points up, which we did not do a very good job with last year. So what we did was we done a deep, really, we got as intentional as we possibly could, we're targeting those students, we know who they are, we're creating rosters for them, we're coming up with a plan, we've got an action moving forward to how we're going to move those students out of office. We won't get them all, but we've got to get the right ones. So there's no reason for a student that can ding us three or four times to not get the extra services that we can possibly provide to them to move out of an office category. Does that make sense? Kind of fast on a lot of stuff I just saw, but you now could ask some questions.
So all the students on the spreadsheet are identified as novice students that fit into a gap population?
Not all of them, like, for example, there are some gap students that are not novice. And what we do is we gave every teacher in our building a roster of what our students scored last year, if they fall in these categories, because we want to bring, we want to put a face of the name and bring a level of awareness to our teachers of who these students are. Now, we have some gap students that scored proficient, some that scored distinguished, which is phenomenal. I mean, those, that kid dinged us multiple times in a great area, and really helped lift some of our scores. The problem is we had more novice than we did distinguished. More novice than we did proficient, pretty much more than we had together. So we kind of balanced our points there.
So the students that have been identified on the spreadsheet though, and then if you read to the right in the columns, those are the programs, intervention programs that they're involved in?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I have a couple of different spreadsheets going around right now. You're looking at one that shows that we're going to make sure that if a student is a novice kid and a gap kid, that while they're getting services, we're going to make sure of that. And so we're just, we're just doing everything, everything we can to be intentional with that. Okay, so, yes, ma'am.
What's SP education?
Special education. That means they had an IEP, so they've been identified with a formal learning disability.
I thought it was something new.
Okay, so what I've just patched out is the math novice reduction focus for moving, we started this right out of the gate in January. It actually began last week. So we gave this, everything, and everything I'm providing for you are items that we've discussed with our teachers in our guided planning sessions and in our faculty meetings. In fact, I had a faculty meeting, we actually gave all the spreadsheets to our teachers so that they could look at every student that they have within their team and their classrooms and just really bring a level of awareness of what we can do to help those students out, not only in their core class, but in the intervention classrooms as well. So what we wrote out last week, starting January ninth, is we've got a novice reduction focus that'll be taking place for eight weeks. We gave the teachers a calendar, we have seventy-seven days where we came back, we had seventy-seven days prior to K-Prep. Currently, we only have sixty-eight. So it was just to bring a level of awareness that we don't have a day we can possibly spare, we've got to do everything we can instructionally to get the most out of our students before that testing period comes back around. We've got two eight-week, eight or four-week windows. The first window is going to be math instruction. So on some of the rosters that you see, you can see on the side, we've created math rosters of gap students for our math teachers to provide intervention in the mornings during our wildcat period. Now, during that time, they're doing direct instruction, they're doing small group, and they're offering technology support. The great thing about this list of students is they're also in their core classes, so they know where some of the gaps are and some of the struggles. So it carries over to give them extended service in the morning during their wildcat period. So really, it's just another intervention. But we know that every student in the classroom right now is a student that can use our services because they're a gap kid. We need those points if we can possibly get them. While that's going on, our other students are currently doing, they're doing DOL, which is daily oral language, because that's an area that we also need to support school-wide. We're doing silences, same reading on Mondays and Fridays. On Tuesdays, we're doing the DOL, we do that every week. And then we also provide opportunities for students to do homework on those days. And in Wednesdays is our STAR K-Prep preparation period. This all takes place during wildcat. So you've got our math teachers grinding out with those gap kids, and you've got our other teachers doing DOLs, SSRs, and K-Prep preparation. And I kind of gave some bullets down at the bottom as far as what that looks like. Special ed teachers will pull out their students, and they'll provide the services that they need within that as well. So our wildcat period for this four weeks is going to be completely reading-focused. Now, when we get to the end of the four weeks, we're in our four weeks with a reading focus. So that's where our reading teachers will have individual rosters... So, that's where our reading teachers will have individual rosters that are specifically targeting for students that we can reduce novice to. So, that's our eight weeks. After that, we're going to go eight weeks of K-Prep preparation, test, I guess, test-taking skills. One thing that we've noticed, we gave a midterm, I call it midterm, but it's probably just a semester summit and final, we gave that in December before the break. We analyzed those results, and there were some grades that we weren't as pleased with as we liked. Pretend I met with the math teachers last week, and one of the math teachers was saying, "You know, we absolutely drilled ratios. We just, I know we went over it, I know those kids knew it, but they didn't perform well on it." Well, what we're finding is it's more of a test-taking skill that they were lacking rather than a mathematical skill. They didn't read through the entire problem, three sentences, they looked directly at the numbers, they started attacking those, but they didn't read what they needed to do with the numbers. So, throughout this whole process, we're finding some gaps in what we need to do mathematically, but we're also finding gaps that we need to do with test-taking skills that we believe will help our students when it's time for them to perform. Don't lie, ask your dad.
What is the look test?
The look test means even if you're not reading, look like you're reading. The goal is for them to finally become bored enough to where they're going to read. And the high school had success doing that. They do the look test over there, so that's what we're doing. We're kind of following their blueprint. Eventually, students will become frustrated of just standing there trying not to read and they'll find something that they want to read, that's something that they've realized at high school. So, like I said, we're only about two weeks in on this, but we're kind of following the same blueprint that the high school uses when students become college career ready and just...
Make it to you.
Okay, so, that's our overall plan for novice reduction. It's a big component that we kind of took short on last year, so I can't say we won't come up short again, but we've got a plan to try to make it better. And that's what we're going to do here, so.
And that was working hard.
Yeah, it's a lot of information I'm throwing at you. Now, we are doing a lot of novice reduction, but we are also continuing to provide gifted services as well. Mr. Mitchell pulls out Gifted every afternoon during class time. He meets with them on Fridays. We, you all just voted on a ELA consultant that started this week, and she's meeting the students and pulling them, and I think that's going very well, of course, this week. So, we kind of meet all the needs of students, but at the same time, we adapt that support so that we need to do specific things for specific kids if they're really struggling. So, it's a challenge.
We're doing project-based learning.
We do have, and that's kind of what the ELA consultant's going to do, is some project-based learning that takes place. She already has a plan on how she's going to roll that out. You know, project-based learning kind of happens quite often in our science classrooms, you know, like our robotics kids here tonight, I mean, they take advantage of all the project-based learning that we can possibly do, clubs, organizations. But, you know, I think that's also that rigor, that higher level of engagement piece that we've got to continue to do a better job of on a unit-to-unit basis in the classroom. So, we're trying to get there.
I'm Mr. Stinson's room today.
Robots.
Robots. And she showed me these little, little tiny robots. Morgan, you know what they are?
Follow the line?
Yeah, well, and programmed with the line, you know, that you can...
They have some now that are about this big. You draw a polar line with a marker, just set it down and follow the line.
But, these are cool little things. She's also working on the engineering for robots. We came up with a commission today, and he said he was disappointed with his walkthroughs he did to school. And I said multiple things, he saw the worksheet, he played with the test, he didn't see kids being active and anything. And he said we needed to be more project-based instead of the worksheet.
That's right. And that's where some of the conversations we had last week come from, is, you know, I think we're getting more teachers in the system that may have come from a student-led environment, but really, a lot of our middle to upper teachers, experienced teachers, probably came from a more teacher-centered environment, and it's just a mind shift. It's a completely different structure of how you release control in your classroom. It's tough. Okay, the last thing I have to do, is we had an internal audit back in October. Kind of, it sort of correlated with what we did here as a district within the audit that took place. So, they were able to send a team to our middle school and just kind of evaluate where we stood and some things that we were doing well and some areas that we could improve in it. They came up with three components, three school improvement priorities that they presented to us. So, what we decided to do is go down in there and break down those indicators and look at what we're currently doing that we feel is established, what we are currently doing that we feel is an area of growth that we have ongoing, and then some areas where we still need to continue to improve. So, provided the internal audit review document to you is the color document, and if you look through these, 3.5 is participate collaboratively in learning communities to improve instruction. That goes within our POC structures, that goes within our guided planning structures, and also the faculty meeting structures. We feel like we really have those established now. We've been doing it since August. And when they evaluated this in October, they gave us a score that I think is less than what they would give us now because it's kind of what we're doing, and we really gained momentum with that structure that we've implemented, which is why we feel like we have it as established. Some ongoing growth within the coaching conversations that we took from that priority. We still want to continue to improve our formative assessments, our summative assessments. The midterms was a really, I thought that was a very successful data point for us because we looked, because it was a summative assessment. That means questions were included. If you get three units of study, there were questions from each of those units that were provided in that December assessment. And if a kid made a 44 on it, well, that means we've got to go back and reteach some of the concepts that they are not retaining, and that's not a hot moment for some of our teachers in most of the field. We're doing learning checks, we're doing start prep and K-Prep, so that's ongoing. Systems of ongoing growth are also our administrative walkthroughs. We want to be consistent with those. We're using a new tool this quarter, but we want our administrators and our leadership team members in the classroom. And we've also been getting a lot of support from our district personnel on that as well. I know Ms. Perschner was in the building a lot today giving us classrooms and giving us some data points on what she's observing, so that's been very helpful. We have a district blitz where Ms. Smith leads the CIEs within our building. They come in and do, they call it blitz, where they come in and do walkthroughs in the classroom. And once again, it's all about the data, what are you seeing in there, what are the consistencies, and what are some areas that we need to continue to grow, and in the student data, looking at how we're performing on the STAR, looking at how we're performing on the assessments on the midterms. And because, you know, if they're taking tests, they're doing writing pieces, but we're not looking at it, providing feedback, then it's really just useless. So, we're really pushing that to take place. Areas where we need to continue to improve is the teacher reflections, collaborative process, teacher capacity. You know, even though I think we have teachers that like each other, sometimes it's uncomfortable to work one-on-one and continue to build capacity with one another. And especially when you're looking at common assessments and your student did well, mine didn't do as well, okay, what happened? What did you do differently than what I did? And sometimes, that's uncomfortable to talk about, so we're still trying to build that process. And professional learnings, we now have committees that we created to give feedback on areas that we can improve on, and also those will begin this week as well. Administrative staff support, district staff support, and district learning communities. Those are all areas that we're using that time to help us improve. Priority two, 3.4 and 3.6, this is the school leaders and monitoring piece, and I know that one thing that I've heard Tim Slosser say many times, if it doesn't get monitored, it doesn't be done. So, that's what we're really trying to do, is build capacity within our buildings, to continue our walkthroughs, our blitzes, being effective with our coaching strategies with our teachers, and continue to establish communication. You just can't communicate enough. And as you can see, in the growing areas, we're doing our learning targets, we're trying to continue to find those high yield strategies. Student engagement is a challenge for us on a consistent basis, and just really a lot of things that I'm already referenced to that we're continuing to do. We do now have a district writing plan that we're implementing, I know Lincoln's starting it, and we've actually implemented it as well, so that there's consistency with all of our writing from pretty much fourth grade through eighth grade, because we've seen some gaps in that. Students just aren't, they're just not writing as much as we need for them to, and so we're trying to improve that area as well. And then, coordinate learning, supportive services. So, it's all about creating those opportunities to support students whether they're struggling or whether they need to be enhanced. And we, obviously, I've kind of touched on our system for math and reading tonight, but, you know, it's not just about intervention, it's about, you know, it's about enrichment, it's about, you know, challenging the gifted students as well and providing services there. And just some, these are just some things that we've had going on. The One School One Book, that was sort of a district initiative that Dr. Flynn led, which I thought was really, I thought was really an impactful thing. I know I had some, just kind of a funny story. My son read a couple of pages before my daughter did, so he ruined one day of reading for her because he told her what happened. So, it was kind of a debate at my house, but I thought that was a good initiative that we had. And then, once again, just walkthroughs, the follow-up, being in the classroom, being present, and helping to provide coaching that's going on. So, we've had a lot of instructional focus for the last few months, because we feel like if we can raise the level of engagement, it can also help with our deficiencies in some of our discipline. So, this is just an academic piece of what's going on. The next thing I plan on presenting to you all is sort of a discipline piece. Look at the data there. We are trending in the right direction. Discipline first decreased in November and December, which was a positive for us. And, you know, that's a whole nother bite of discussion on some areas that we're seeing with some of our discipline challenges. I'm sorry so much, but this right here pretty much illustrates August to December for Franklinson to middle school. I thought it was all important information and data for you all to see, and I don't know, I just appreciate you letting me do that tomorrow.
Any other questions?
You want this one back?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Awesome work.
So, I can assure you, they were working hard, Ms. Smith and her team, teaching and learning, you know, Mr. Kilburn going over, helping with, you know, some of the behavior things, attendance and all those good things, so.
Thank you.
Y'all keep up the progress.
Doing good.
Okay. Next is a visitor, puppet comments. Next is the superintendent staff.
Okay, we'll keep it moving, keep it up to date on various aspects of the school system. We have our reports. The first one's our dropout report. Also, we have our quarterly discipline suspension and true to reports. If you have any questions.
But, we cheered a few less on text about the discipline reform. You had a couple of yays.
Yes.
Blasphemy.
Yeah, we like it when it trends the way we want. We're going to continue to work on that. I think you heard Mr. Delka, he mentioned, and I think Mr. Kilburn's going to go work with the staff at middle school here pretty soon on some strategies, some de-escalation, those kinds of things. And we'll keep moving that way, and, you know, he continues to work district-wide as well on those things. The next report's your personnel report. Dr. McIntosh is back there. If you have any questions there. Also, we have our out-of-district student trips, out-of-district staff administrative travel reports, and then a series of financial reports, daycare, food service, athletics, our budget report, reconciliation and construction reconciliation, fixed assets, visa charge reports. Amanda DeWes is here, and she'll be, she'll probably give you some high points on the draft budget here.
Of course, the revenue projections and the draft budget were based off those projections that ended in December. The only updates at this point to the expenditures or staffing, which is just all for step increases. We don't budget for Fund II or 21 for grants, which are grants during the draft budget. Everything else is just pretty standard for right now. projections, general fund is $175,000, less than the projected for beginning amounts, which is very typical for the draft budget, so no surprise at this point.
Just to put it record, I hate the draft.
Thank you.
It's always a, it's not a very sunny picture, but anyway, it's part of the process, so step one, thank you, and we're doing that. We also have our review of nutritional and physical activity report card, and Sarah Richardson leads that. Then, we have a review of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, then the ARFE report, and Whitney Maxwell's here, give me any questions there. And then, the final part of our report is more of a discussion. I believe it's on February 9th. We have our annual joint meeting of the Board of Education and the SPM councils, and so I wanted to have a discussion with you all about some ideas of possibly what you all would like to see happen in that. There's a lot of important things, you know, as I thought about tonight, David just brought up the kind of project-based learning and the learning by doing. Last year, we, you know, we watched that interesting movie, a thought-provoking movie that was all about kind of that learning by doing in an old school that really made that their whole focus. And certainly, with us opening this exploratorium, you know, we're trying to promote that kind of learning and the kind of learning you saw, you know, tonight, when kids are actually doing things, presenting things, exhibiting your work, you know, I think those are the best learning experiences, and I'd love to continue to expand those. But, closing the achievement gap, the novice reduction is a, you know, is a big deal for us. And then, you know, the whole thinking about what's the next steps in terms of our college and career readiness, and we talked about some things of, you know, from kind of project lead away, presenting that kind of idea and seeing how that might play out in light of sort of employment projections for our area, and thinking about the, you know, the launch gateway and the engineering, computerized, advanced manufacturing kind of plan that we put together for the Kentucky Work Ready Skills Initiative. So, you know, those are some things that I was kind of interested, kind of want to throw out there. Thought about having it at the exploratory as a location. In the past, we've done home groups, we've also done kind of roundtable, where we could rotate and have that interaction, everybody would have an opportunity to interact. I think you all like that roundtable approach, but wanted to open up, Chalena had, you had an idea, you shared with me also.
Talking about the transitions we're possibly doing. We've been discussing Verona having some type of like, you know, exit exam per grade level to know are our kids ready to go on to the next level. I don't know that we're necessarily ready for that yet, but it would be nice to at least see in the transitional years, like from kindergarten to first, third to fourth, fifth to sixth, and then eighth to high school. So, thought maybe that would be the time to kind of throw that out there on, you know, what did the school state that that criteria would be, what does it look like, and then just, you know, is the community ready for those kind of things? Because obviously, in some of our cases, if you're not ready to move on, then we've got to keep you there until you have mastered those standards, and then we can obviously, hopefully accelerate you as well and keep you flexibly, you know, moving within those. Just because, you know, you're in first grade and you're a certain age level doesn't mean you're all at that same rate, and yet we're kind of just massively moving them along kind of thing. So, we've just kind of been discussing, again, should we have some type of exit criteria per grade level? I just know that we talk a lot about smooth transitions from each school, and a lot of times, it seems like we kind of talk more on the end of the behavioral, you know, are they ready, are they, do they know what's going to be expected of them, have we talked with the staff about this is the group coming through, that kind of thing, but I don't know that we really kind of honed in on what's the actual...
Well, and part of, yeah, part of the idea, you know, we have this school readiness standards, and so we, you know, we actually have an assessment to see our kids, do they have the, you know, what readiness level are they? And so, we've kind of talked about, you know, our mission, you know, is to prepare students for the next level of life, whatever it may be. So, thinking about, you know, are they truly prepared to move to the next level? So, you know, that was, so that was one of the other ideas we thought about, you know... So, you know, that was, so that was one of the other ideas we thought about, you know, let's talk about this, and let's, can we develop a plan on like really establishing it? Not so much as a test, like thinking on a traditional test, but more from a competency base. You know, have they demonstrated the competencies that would show that they're ready to go to the next level?
Well, and I, and this is wordsmithing probably, but we talk about kindergarten readiness standards, like what do kids have to have to be successful at kindergarten? And maybe that's what we're talking about, is what do these kids need to have to be successful in high school, do they have to have? And it's not, it's about, you know, going back to the kindergarten readiness standards, it's about being able to use scissors, it's also about being able to sit still long enough to be able to absorb information, it's about lots of things. And I don't, I don't know that it's so much about exiting as much as it is about entering. Because you enter adulthood, you don't, I mean, you know, sort of also means that you're exiting teenagerdom, but you're, it's, I don't know, there's just a different feel about entering something, like you go towards something as opposed to leaving something behind.
Well, and that's, that's not the conversation we had too, because, you know, sometimes we have to look at it as retaining in a certain grade level, and like I said, Dr. Flynn, it's more about an extra year of primary versus, you know, oh, we kept it back or something like that. But again, I think we're just, a lot of times, it's kind of like an EOC, it's the end of course exam. We're talking about that for kindergarten first, but again, we didn't want to hone in and make it one assessment or one exam, so I might not necessarily use the right word.
No, but I understand. Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, I'm just like, in my head, that's how I like think of it.
You're like, yeah, like the entrance criteria for the next level is this, as opposed to, this is the exit criteria.
I just remember in my very young adulthood, I had somebody way, way smarter and more experienced than I was at that time. Of course, I knew everything because I was 20-something. And he said to me, you know, you never want, you have to look behind you to see where you've been, but you always want to work forward to where you need to go. And it's just that idea, are you ready to enter that next?
Well, you know, we call commencement, you know, exercises, graduation, you know, that for a purpose, because you're commencing to that next phase of your life. So it's that kind of same idea. So anyway, those are a few little ideas to plant seeds. What would be of interest to you? And, thanks.
I have a concern. I mean, I think that Simpson County schools are amazing. I think the faculty is amazing. But anytime when you are striving for excellence, I think that we have to understand, when we had our evaluation, they told us that we were right here. And there are things that we need to do to reach the top so that we can, you know, build up that momentum for excellence that we're achieving. And one of the things I would like for us to visit at that meeting is how can we motivate minority students to participate? I have been coming to these meetings for a while now, and every time the students get up to present, there's no minority students here. And I'm not just speaking about African-American, I'm speaking Hispanic, I'm speaking disabled, I'm speaking, we're not, we're not diversifying the outlet the way I would like to see it diversified a little bit more. Our minority students are doing well in athletics, but I would like to see them challenged a little bit more in academics. And I would like for us to, when we get to this meeting, I would like for us to roundtable and discuss what we can do to motivate our children. Because, you know, I've seen in different projects that I've done around the community, some of the students just aren't motivated. I don't know if they're not being asked, I don't know if they're not being challenged, I don't know if they're just lazy, most of them are probably. You know, what is it that we need to do as leaders to grasp, grasp these kids and, you know, encourage them to participate on a more academical as opposed to athletic level?
Okay, other ideas of interest?
I gave one to David, it was really good the day I gave it to her, but I can't remember what it was. Remember what we were talking about?
Lord of Kings.
Oh, that's what it was? And I was giving them LCCs and LCCs and, and I went SPEC, and I'm like, what's bad? I don't remember talking about that.
Dr. Kirchner has the book now.
I do, and it's on my to-do list, so like a cheat sheet of acronyms.
Yeah, well, we were at the KSBA at the last meeting, they gave us a booklet of all of the abbreviations, and I passed that on to Dr. Kirchner so that she can give us, give the tool to the rest of the faculty and, you know. So we all need to be speaking the same language. And I noticed that at the last meeting, we had a couple of people that were just at our table, and when a certain acronym or something came up, that person looked like the deer in the headlights, and it was like, they were afraid to say, what are they talking about? You know, so that's another thing, we just have to be all speaking the same language. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, we need an acronym course. We have a lot of new ones too.
They were going to cheat you, Simpson County cheat you.
Or maybe everybody could come to the meeting and wear those hats, you know, with the card across, and then we'd have a quiz.
Well, then you could pull a Westphal and say, a DHAC. And look at it like, what's a DHAC? Just don't have a clue. Okay. What, so you'd like a roundtable format?
Yeah.
And any of the ideas that we've discussed kind of really strike a chord? You know, because to some degree, you know, and I will tell you, the next accountability system that Kentucky's working on, you know, closing the achievement gap is going to be a huge piece of that, and it really needs to, a lot of that gets into, what you're talking about is, you know, it's how do we invite everybody to the table, whether they're minority, they're poor, they have disability, they speak a different language at home, you know, we need to figure out how do we invite them, to get them to, you know, to hone their education and take advantage of all of these opportunities that we have. Because we really have virtually something for everyone, and they'll, you know, they'll go out there and grasp it. And that's our challenge.
I can't help but, I have to say this, I can't help but to revisit, my brother, my oldest brother is a West Point graduate. You know, he's the smart, one of the smartest men I know, and he was the best basketball player that I've ever met. And when he jumped up for a slam dunk in a game, he fell down and broke both his wrists, and his career was over. If it hadn't been for his academic achievement, he would have been done.
Well, you know, I've heard a lot of stories of, I don't want to pick on Millie, but Millie has just a great story, just about her, you know, her story of how she got where she is. And part of it was some people invited her to the table, and, you know, if you haven't heard this story, you need to hear it, but it's really, it's inspiring. But that, you know, I think that's what we got, we got to replicate those kinds of things.
We're all in this together.
So, yeah. So anyway, so we've talked about learning by doing, we've talked about, you know, transition planning, and thinking about, you know, those entrance criteria, so to speak, competencies that say, okay, you're ready, you know, you're ready to enter at the next level. We talked about closing the achievement gap, and then we were talking about kind of next generation, you know, career readiness in some kind of schools. So any of those grab you? Do you want some time to think about it, give you some feedback? Because we do need to start getting the plan together to make it a really worthwhile, engaging.
I think, you know, similar to what we all, I mean, you know, they all sound good, I mean.
Okay. Well, y'all think about that, and I'll just send you something out that maybe you all can give some feedback on, or kind of weigh in on, and we'll just see what the current thinking is. Good discussion, Ian. Anything else for me to go with that? That concludes the reports. Next is the Senate Committee.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the other? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is action items, and the first one is to approve the district report card.
Motion. Second.
Bridget. Bridget. Discussion on the other side. Well, Dr. Kirchner, I think, put this overview in addition, you know, this is kind of a holdover thing, that when we used to have a lot more influence over what went into the district report card, now, for the most part, the state just populates that from their databases. It's a great resource, it's chock full of lots of information, not just academic, but non-academic financial data's in there. So if you haven't had a chance to really dive into it, you know, sometimes I invite you to do that, because it tells a lot of information about schools. But if you have any questions?
I have one more question. I got confused in the career pathways. It looks like the enrollment is listed from nine through 12, but the certificates were awarded to 12th grade only. Then if you state comparison beside it, but how do you look at the average, the state average compared with just being one grade difference, but they're using nine through 12 for the comparison?
You know what, I don't know that, but let me look at that while I have my laptop, and can I email you back the other one? I don't know if I can answer that call.
I got confused trying to do this out.
Yeah, let me look at that and pull it up and see.
Well, one thing I know, Bridget, you might, do you know the answer to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Basically, we're saying that on the career pathways, it talks about, you know, nine through 12, but then the career readiness only acknowledges 12.
This is different, they're only giving a 12th grade. But when they look, when it's state listed, it lists all the grades, so how do you compare all the grades if it's only certificate given to the 12th grade?
Well, by, it would be, if you tried to say that a freshman or sophomore was career ready, it's almost impossible to get career ready, your freshman and sophomore. So they automatically take those out of any equation as far as career readiness. And then by the time they're a junior or senior, you could be career ready as a junior, but it's a, it's a small number, and then your career readiness students come in at their senior year. That's part of their accountability, is the career. We don't even mark them career ready until they're seniors.
I mean, I'd like to, if you look at the comparison, it's showing that it's all the 12th.
Probably that'll be the, how many students are actually in the pathway as compared to how many are actually career ready. Because you can enter a pathway as a freshman, but then you don't actually become career ready until you're a senior when we mark you career ready, because you have other criteria that has to go along with being in a pathway. You can be in a pathway and still, and still do four years in that pathway and still not be career ready. But I guess that's the best I can do.
And then the current system, you have to be, you have to have the technical.
And the academic.
And the academics. Interestingly, the new system that's proposed, they're talking about just, if you give the industry cert or a post-grad, that's it. Anyway. Thanks, Bridget, I know you're going to be calling, but she's our resident expert in the room, so thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Next is a request to approve contract for recruitment of family involving specialists to be paid in preschool, foster, free time.
Motion. Second.
Second, aye. Special. Well, as you know, we were successful in receiving a preschool kind of planning grant, Whitney Maxwell and Rachel Baron worked together on that, and so they're ready to execute this work, and you have a contract proposal in there to hire Katie Salt to come and help us with this work. Of course, Katie's highly experienced in preschool, and we recommend you do this temporary grant for this work. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Next is the motion to confirm.
Motion. So.
All in favor?
Aye. So this one here, um, I can only find this.